Our two pledges. Gracious Father, I thank you for this new day that you've given us. For the beauty of it, for the power that comes to us when we enter into a relationship with you in prayer. And thank you for fellowship in this room. Each of us with our own life experience, joining together to lead this institution. Bless us today that we might be able to see someone else, I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge alleges to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Honor to the Texas flag. Pledge alleges to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
At least Dallas remembered how to play ball.
There is a quorum present and the meeting is being recorded. Somewhere is a. Oh, we don't vote on anything today. This is a workshop.
Workshop. It's been a while.
My apologies. There is a moment for members of the public to speak to the board if you wish. Seeing or hearing none, we go to item two, which is item two. We go to item three, the chancellor's update.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Some things in your packet, passed out this invitation to the Harkite Chamber Commerce City of Harkites Community Celebration. So if you are interested in that, please let Debbie know. It's Monday, February the 13th from six to eight PM at KC3 in Colleen. Also, you should have. Did you do the cards? We didn't do the rotary cards?
I have them, but I haven't passed them out to you.
So if you want tickets to the Rotary Club of Colleen auction on February the 4th, we have tickets for you. So however many you would like. So you take your bride and your wife and whoever else you want to take. So we got those for you. And let's see. I think that's all we had. Did we? Dr. Edie, did you want to mention your new doctor onboard? I know she does.
I would love to mention the new doctor onboard. It is Dr. Tammy Samaripanau. She defended her dissertation last week and she asked to come back because today is our first day of classes. So she's meeting with the students, but she joined us for lunch and I know some of them, some of you had a chance to visit with her. But it is Dr. Samaripanau. We're very, very excited for her.
Thank you. Sir, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Item four is the update on the grounded aircraft. Mr. Molina.
Welcome everyone again. And one of you talking about the little bit of the program, first thing in the agenda is the update on the ground aircraft. So the, as you know, the three ten, the famous three ten has been grounded for a significant amount of time, but now the engine has been shipped out to the vendor. It's been repaired. At the moment, we estimate somewhere around end of February, early March when we have the engine back. It's a whole project on its own, but everything is going as planned so far. The other aircraft that was grounded is another Cessna one fifty-two that needed an engine overhaul that we're going to be already awarded the vendor for this repair. And also is going to be shipped for repair in a different facility. And we're expecting to have the crate sometime this week. It's a special crate that can hold the engine inside safely. Now, I know it's a pretty quick little presentation here, but do you have any questions on that so far?
I have one question. What is our maintenance staff like?
At the moment?
Process all this for us?
So you're talking about how many people we have available right now?
Whatever.
So we have one full-time mechanic. He's our director of mechanic, a very experienced mechanic so far. And we also have another part-time mechanic with us. In addition to that, we have hunger helpers. Those are more basic positions, but they do assist with what we call progressive maintenance items, such as changing oil, things like that to help.
Is some of that like in contract work? They're not actually on staff or not?
They're staff.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're staff.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Questions? Thank you, sir. You're going to talk about purchase of aircraft?
Yes, me. Okay, so now we're talking about the purchase of the aircraft. So it's a little bit of a summary of what we talked about before. Now this over here, there was typo. It should have been four, but we have four Cessna one fifty-twos to be sold. And we have one Cessna one fifty-two that will be used for parts. So in total, it's going to be five of them. Now, we did already the bidding process and we recommend purchase. The offer from MRVIA, which is a Vulcan Air V one point oh. The cost is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand per airplane. So for a total of three airplanes, it's going to be one million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. And the source for this is going to be the Jones Foundation that was donated some time ago. And as of December twenty twenty-two, we have one million or one point three million dollars available for this. As a reminder of what the airplane looks like, a lot updates in the cockpit. We have more capacity as well. Now, the timeline for delivery, according to our manufacturer and the dealership, is going to be approximately June and September of twenty twenty-three. Now, do you have any questions about this?
This is, this will come up for vote next week, two weeks from now.
Short question. So the student population warrants three new aircrafts?
The replacement of the aircraft is because of the aging of the fleet that we currently have. They've been in service for forty-plus years, flying almost daily since then. So.
I remember your presentation previously, but I'm, I'm, my question is that to purchase three at once, all the money is there and the money is yours to spend as designated. But I just wondered if the student population warranted an immediate purchase of three?
Yes, yes it does.
About how, about how many students are there for that particular aircraft?
So each airplane can hold about seven students weekly.
How many are in, in the program?
Oh, in the program? We currently have fifty-seven students active in the flight courses.
You can use seven at a time?
Yeah, so each airplane, yes. We're going to be using three of the new ones. We have other four remaining one fifty-twos after that. And we have four of the previous purchase that we did in twenty seventeen, I think.
If I could ask a question or interject, you know, the one time we had ninety-some students in that program.
Yes.
And we had two, we had more students than we could handle with the, with the aircraft. We could handle them, but it would just take longer. So trying to get this program down to a year, I mean, a two, two and a half year program versus a three, three and a half year program. We, we've not accepted any new students. He's got a list of students waiting. When we get these new aircraft in and he gets those in operation and we can see what we can do with the four that he's, that we're trying to scale and what we need there, then he can start building on what his capacity is for, for, for those total, that total fleet. And it might go to sixty, it might go to seventy, it might stay at fifty. We don't, we don't know yet until he starts putting that out. I mean, he can put it on paper and work it out that way, but is it really going to be that way? Because things happen. Weather blows in here and we have two weeks shutdown. So he'll, he'll have to work through that. But I, I think, I think we're on the right path. I think that we're, we're getting our, our program back to where it should be and it's respectable and you're getting some accolades from other schools about what we're doing.
Yes.
And so, yeah, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that and competitions that we've dropped out of for the last few years that we haven't been involved in, that gets us on marketing, but we're going to get back into that. So.
Yes, we, we are, we've been performing very well. Even students that have been in running the program for a while have commented that they have not seen what we call check rides. There are pilot examinations, as many as we have seen in the past few months. We have almost thirty in the past five months and it's a lot. We, Killian, myself, Mr. Reynolds have been doing what we call state checks, which is a final exam for them. And we've been so busy with those, it's almost crazy to think how many students we have been doing those for.
And I know you've been talking to Dr. Kraft about a program with the KICD?
Yes, we talked about it before, yes.
Lots of things on the horizon.
Any other comments, questions?
Is there age limit on high school kids?
We have a minimum. So just because the age to obtain a pilot's, a student pilot's certificate and also to be able to apply for the exam on the private pilots, so to obtain that student pilot's certificate sixteen years of age and also to be able to go to the exam at seventeen years of age. So we cannot go extremely young, but we can do certain other things that are only ground related that we can start helping them advance on that part.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thanks, Lee.
Item six, excuse me, item, yes, number six, Mr. Kirchner, you have something about whatever Kubota initiative is. Explain that to us.
Good afternoon, CTC Board of Trustees in Chester, Illinois. I'm William Kirchner, the department chairman and professor for diesel and industrial technology. I'd like to present to you before the pilot program that will be embedded into our already approved diesel curriculum of the Kubota Tech. You may ask, what is Kubota? Kubota Corporation introduced its first tractor to the United States in nineteen sixty-nine, filling the product void in America's marketplace for subcontract or sub-contact tractors. The Kubota twenty-one horsepower L two hundred was an overnight success. Kubota Tractor Corporation, KTC, was formed in nineteen seventy-two and the company continued to expand through its line of US marketing. You may ask. Well, there is some pictures of our new equipment that we've received. That's our RTV X eleven forty that Kubota USA sent down to us as a training platform for our students. And you can see we have students right now that are pop testing some injectors. There's a V thirty-eight hard engine. There's a hard thirteen horses that Kubota USA donated to us for training purposes. Also, we have a small gasoline engine. We have students right now doing front-end alignments on it and we have our full-time lab assistant verifying their work to make sure it is to standards. You may ask, what is Kubota Tech? Kubota Tech is a program aspiring technicians with the knowledge and skills successfully pursue a career in the off-road diesel industry. The certification program is the trained students technician to inspect, diagnose, repair Kubota equipment and reliability and customer satisfi- satisfications. The student technician works with dealers in the community to gain skills and experience required to be an integral member of the community. Right now, there are six Kubota dealerships within a twenty-mile radius. We're talking with them. We're working with them. WC Tracker, Belton, Edmunds Tracker in Georgetown. And we're trying to partner up with them so we can have more training equipment for this. The industry is hurting right now for technicians of that sort. I'd like to turn around and say about our program goals, that is not on that slide. And our program goals is to meet the needs of qualified early career technicians into high school and through our college. Help students get certified in the beginning career in the local Kubota dealerships, build a win-win partnership between dealers and participating high schools. What are the benefits? Successful graduations will have the opportunity to work with Kubota technicians at dealerships across the country. Working with Kubotas, this opportunity provides job placement, excellent earning potentials, great benefits and an excellent working environment. Kubota is a global organization. Now, train the trainer. Currently, I have just recently received my Kubota Service Technician Level One Certification through Kubota USA. I am certified through NC three and Kubota as a engine trained trainer technician. And I am certified through Kubota and NC three as a hydraulics trained trainer instructor technician. January the twenty-ninth to February the fourth, I will be going to Worcester, Ohio for product delivery inspection and assembly and brakes steering and suspension certification, which is two more certifications that we'll be able to offer at CTC. There's a total of eight. We will be able to offer four currently. Does NC three and Kubota, this is what they are doing with Kubota Tech. So product delivery inspection and assembly in February, I will be able to certify at Central Texas College. Maintenance procedures, engines, I can certify. Hydraulics, I can certify. Brake steering suspension, I can certify. So the maintenance procedures, power trains, electrical and preventive maintenance, those classes are further down the road. Is there any questions in reference to the Kubota Tech that we're offering to add into our curriculum that is already up and running?
I'm, I'm just curious, did we pursue Kubota or did they pursue us?
Kubota came down and asked us because they did not have a training center in the state of Texas. So we were working with them. We will be the first Kubota Training Center in the state of Texas. I am the first in Oklahoma, New Mexico and Texas that is a Level One Kubota Certified Technician. And I'm moving that forward while I use that with my education to teach the students. So I know what they're looking at in the industry and that's what I'm teaching them.
Well, I applaud you for that. This is the CTC that, that I have known for since the early seventies, where you, the organization will pursue businesses that will move into our community or programs that might be of interest. So CTC, that's how I got to know them early on, just providing a service. And I, this is an amazing job and I, I compliment you for being motivated to go to, one, Ohio in the winter and second, and second, your willingness to learn and become certified in all these specialties so that you can pursue that and they, it's, it's marketing, bringing more students on our campus or going to them and letting them know that we exist. So I, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
William, explain a little bit. You, you mentioned to me about the marketing aspect of Kubota and what they're expecting or what, what we're going to be able to do with them in terms of marketing throughout the United States, not just Texas, and where we sit within, within that whole sphere.
Currently, we are a leadership school through NC three, National Coalition of Certificates and Certifications, which is, you know, they're like recruiters, national recruiters through Snap-on. We have eight different certificates that we do and they turn around and market us at their major website and online and through other colleges that we go to. Now we're getting into Kubota Tech, which is bigger. And like I said, we're going to be certified in four of the eight where they come to us. They're technicians. If they need additional training or certifications, they come to us as a training center. So NC three in the past or in the future, they might turn around and say, we like what's going on at CTC because we see your certificate rates. We might want to invite a bunch of other colleges down to see what CTC is offering and how they're running their programs. So marketing-wise, with NC three behind us and Kubota USA behind us, it's, it's a win-win situation, like I mentioned. You know, they're, I plan on doing well. And so I plan on them bringing many people down here. And hopefully the college can handle all the people now I'm hoping that they bring.
We just don't want anyone else from the state of Texas. They can come from any other state, but not from Texas. We're the only one in Texas.
But we want students from all over.
Yes.
From what I understood, you tell me the other day that students can ident, Kubota will identify a student that wants to get certifications and they can't get it wherever they're at and they might send them here to get that certification.
Yes, that's, that's another thing with, working with Mr. Jeff Wagley, which is Kubota Tractor and Kubota USA. He is their educational manager. He is putting our name out. Right now, if you go on Google and look for Kubota Tech, you will see we are one of eight colleges that is on Google that is teaching the Kubota Tech programs. So we're out there already by Kubota putting us out. And if there are students that are, are other individuals that want to be taught, they could read, they could talk to him or use the website and they could see what other is out here that is teaching this. And like right now, I'm going to go up there to Worcester up there where Ohio State University. So I'm a little college CTC. We're going up in the big dog country. And we're going to let them know that we're here and we accept success.
Can we use this mark, this information to market our school? Can we use it?
Yes.
And our marketing folks will work with, with William to get that done too.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Doctor Gary, talk about Saks.
That was exciting news.
Well, this is exciting.
It's exciting, but in a different way.
Yeah, heart rate goes up with that, with the Saks reaffirmation.
Doctor Gary, it's always exciting.
Well, thank you. As you all are aware, we are in the process of undergoing our reaffirmation. I've spoke about this before and the chancellor wanted me to give, wanted me to give you an update on where we stand with the reaffirmation process. In twenty twenty-five is when we will be reaffirmed, reaccredited. But this is the schedule of, we've recently received a little more detail as to what we're doing. And at the beginning of December, we attended the leadership orientation at Saks. And that was at the Saks Conference, Saks COC Conference. Our compliance certification is due on March first of twenty twenty-four. Okay? That's less than fourteen months away. So we are in the process of, of writing that and we're, I'm going to outline some of the details of who's going to be doing what in a minute. The off-site peer review will be conducted in April. What that means is that's not our off-site locations. That's the off-site review. So we'll be submitting our compliance certification March first or before March first. The off-site review is that puts a group of peers from other colleges outside of Texas that will review the seventy-three principles that we write to. And they will give us feedback on that. Should they have any questions or don't feel like we are in compliance with any of those seventy-three principles, we will have to do what's called a focus report. And we submit that focus report six weeks in advance of the onsite review. And that's when the committee, a different set of peers comes and visits us. At the same time, six weeks prior to this, this visit, which probably, the visit's going to be in October, but, so we have to get this submitted in August. Our quality enhancement plan, our QEP plan is also due at that point. That is a five-year plan, a QEP. So we have to write, it's about a seventy-five page document, this QEP plan, and submit that for the review of the team that will be onsite. During the six weeks, they'll go over all that review. They'll come and visit us, like I said, in October. The first choice that I submitted to Saks was October seventh through tenth. Hopefully that will be the week that, that they choose to come see us. If not, I gave them two other options that would work for us. After they review us onsite and then they'll also have chosen off-site locations to go visit. Well, we'll have to take them there. They will compile their assessment of what they saw as well as what we wrote in that focus report. Should they find us still out of compliance with anything, we will have an opportunity to write a response to that. And then that will be reviewed by the Board of Trustees and hopefully we will then be reaccredited in June of twenty twenty-five. So that's the overall schedule of what we've got to work through, through our twenty twenty-five reaffirmation. So a little bit more about it. We selected a leadership team and the majority of these people did go to Saks in December. I have an open place for another faculty and we will have an open place for a new Director of Institutional Effectiveness. There's a name on this list that you probably don't recognize, Dr. Carrie Rose. She'll be joining us next week as a new Dean of Institutional Effectiveness. So institutional accountability and curriculum support and she'll be on this leadership team as well. Then we will need thirteen other leads to support the fourteen sections of the writing of our compliance report. I say thirteen leads because we don't have an opportunity to write anything about our own integrity. They assess our integrity and determine if we are operating with full integrity on all of our principles, the peer review. So I need thirteen people to take the lead on these sections and I'm seeking volunteers from our, our institution as we speak. I don't know, may, I don't know if the board could do that, but you know, we never know. It would be different. These are some of the principles that are most cited by the peer review committees. So after the initial submission of our compliance report, these are the most cited ones that they come back and say the institutions are out of compliance. And this is from the twenty twenty-one class. So the most recent group of institutions that they reviewed, the most cited one is faculty qualifications and then the second most cited is financial documents. Ninety-four percent of the institutions were cited for improper faculty qualifications. Most of the time that is resolved because then you write to how you fixed it on the focus report. And then after the focus report, you can see that it falls down to twenty-one percent of the institutions are still found out of compliance with faculty qualifications. The top one cited after the focus report is the quality enhancement plan. And that's because that's the first time that they've gotten to review it and given feedback on it. Then after all is said and done and we've done, we've done a response, which hopefully we won't have to, but a response after they've been onsite, the financial responsibility is still the most cited. The Board of Trustees then imposes possible sanctions or warnings to the institution if you're still deemed out of compliance after the response report. It's important to note that I mentioned the Board of Trustees. Our chancellor does serve on the Board of Trustees and actually on the executive committee, but that will not give us any kind of leeway or any kind of pass on any of this. As a matter of fact, we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard because of that. So just a little bit about the QEP. The QEP, the Quality Enhancement Plan, is an institution-wide project that we have to have a lot of people involved with, a lot of input from individuals, lots of evaluations. And this is a plan that we will work on for five years. It takes financial support. It takes people's support. It, it has to be related in some way, shape or form to student learning outcomes or to student success. So we have a team in place. It's called the QEP Steering Committee that has met already one time to determine who or how we would obtain the information from the, our constituents, our people. They would submit proposals for a QEP and how we would solicit that. So we've met, we've decided that, I've already received two proposals that we're, we're looking at, but we're going to meet again and continue the process for the quality enhancement plan. So if you have any ideas, let me know about improving student success at our institution. So when you're at the Saks yearly meeting, at the end, the business meeting, there is an opportunity to celebrate or to cry. I call it cheers or tears. The Saks institutions that passed, that got their reaccreditation are put up on the board very nicely, this big board. And they read every single one that was reaccredited, went through the reaffirmation process and everybody claps and woo-hoo's and does great, you know, congratulates them. And they also put up the substantive changes, the things that, other things that are, have done, institutions have done well over the past year up on the board. But they also put sanctions and negative outcomes, actions up on the board. You can see that this is a local college that is now on sanction by Saks for what they did not write their compliance to the standards. The next level after sanction is warning. Typically, an institution that goes on warning doesn't come out of it. It's very difficult to get back after you've gone to warning. So this one is, is an institution from Georgia. But I wanted to share that because I've, many, many times I've said to the faculty and to the staff that, you know, we don't want our name up there. We, we don't, we don't want to see it on, on these slides. And, and this was recognized there. It was almost like a, a eye-opener. They're like, oh. They're like, oh, my gosh, now I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, these are big boards in front of about nine thousand of our colleagues.
And then it's also put on the Saks website as well. And they don't just put it up there, they read it, word for word. Yeah, exactly. So that, but hopefully we won't have any of those issues, we'll be on the first page, okay? Anyway, that's, any questions about our reaffirmation process? Very.
It's a lot of work.
Very. Seventy-three principles. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chancellor, members of the board. In the next two to three minutes, I will give you an update on the first reporting period Title IX cases that we had come into the college from the time here to September first twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. In total, we received five cases of those cases. One case was dismissed due to the respondent no longer being affiliated with Central Texas College. The other four cases moved to, to an investigation. We currently have three open investigations and then one was dismissed due to lack of participation by the complaint. As we continue to educate faculty, staff, and students on Title IX, what the law requires, I foresee an average of about three to four cases per reporting period. This is not a bad indicator, it's an indicator that the program is working and people are coming forward to report those things, subject to your questions.
Anybody question, comment? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, good afternoon. I'm here just to give a quick update regarding the freeze that took place over the Christmas break. We had four buildings that were impacted. It was primarily due to the network outage. As I had presented to the board, I think a month or two earlier, Ideal Impact was working with us on changing out some controllers, some programming so that we could achieve some energy efficiency. Well, right before break and when all the, the network outage situation took place, they didn't have an opportunity to push out all of the programming. And so when, during the break, when we had identified that we were going to see some of the cooler temps, we made our best effort to try to upload to individual programs, to try to push out as much as we can to do some manual adjustments. Unfortunately, there were four buildings that were impacted. The Cade Center, the Campus Center, the Technology Center, and the Nursing Building. The mainly some coils that had busted, as well as a sprinkler system within the nursing building. This isn't going to be anywhere near what the impact was a couple of years ago when we had that substantial freeze situation. We are certainly working with our insurance carrier. I don't have a total dollar amount at the moment, but as we identify the costs that need to be submitted to the insurance company, we're working with risk management and affording that. They've been good so far on going ahead and getting some items approved. So just wanted to update the board, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Mark.
Ms. Evans, you have something for our election?
Yes, this document is, starts the process of the election that we're going to have on May the sixth of twenty twenty-three. We have two places open, Place Six and Place Seven. And the filing period starts tomorrow through February the seventeenth. And it just lists the polling places. And, and the only change to the document, I spoke with Justin Carruthers this morning. The Corial County precincts, if we have an election, will be at the Corial County Early Voting Center in Coke Terrace. So that will be changed by the time I get this back to you on the thirty-first.
So the two positions that are up for election, they haven't had to file yet.
Tomorrow's the first.
Anybody question about that issue? Representatives for board members?
Thank you.
None reported? The next meeting is two weeks from now instead of next week. Is there explanation for that?
Yes, sir, we will. Senior leadership will all be at a conference symposium and will be out of town. So we asked that it be moved one week before we can be back.
Tuesday, January thirty-first will be the board meeting and then the workshop in February twenty-first. No reason for an executive session today?
None.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion been made in second, all in favor, say aye. Thank you.